Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Merrimack School District SAU 26 School Board Meeting for March 20th, 2023. Will everyone please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now, we're going to move on to public participation. Fifteen minutes will be set aside early in the meeting for citizens to address the Board under Agenda Items listed as Public Participations. Citizens will also be able to address the Board at the end of the Board meeting under the Agenda Item entitled "Public Comments on Agenda Items." If you're going to speak, please go to the microphone and give your name and home address. Thank you. Would anyone like to speak? Seeing none, we're going to move forward. There we go. We're at recognitions.
Well, we have some wonderful recognition tonight. We have some outstanding athletes from Merrimack High School that we're going to recognize tonight. We will recognize students who have excelled in girls' wrestling and also the bowling team. So Jen and Lori, if you want to accompany me up front here, we'll have some certificates.
I'm actually going to stay back here and read names, and I'm going to pass them to you.
Okay, that's fine.
So I'm just going to start with wrestling, and I just wanted to talk a little bit about the history of the Merrimack Wrestling Program. The history of the Merrimack Program actually started in the 1980s, and two middle school teachers named Coach Havner and Coach Starr were actually coaching at West High School, and people wanted to start a program in Merrimack. So the first year, they coached without pay to be able to get wrestling at Merrimack High School. And so I think that that's, you know, they would be so excited tonight to see that we have girl wrestlers who are state champions. It looks how far our program has come since the early 1980s, and what an excitement time for Merrimack Wrestling.
They were also my middle school teachers. Yes, very true. Okay, we are going to start with girls' wrestling. Emily Angelo was first place in the 2023 NHIAA Girls Wrestling Championship. Is she here? I'm going to face it in. We did only program reading. Avery Barardinelli was third place in the 2023 NHIAA Girls Wrestling Championship. Before we have the recognitions for the coaches, I just want to mention Charlene Haddad and Kalia Awaji. They are first-year varsity wrestlers who also competed at the state tournament. We have recognition certificates for the coaches as well. Brian, I'm going to call all three of you up at once because that seemed like it works. For our outstanding, for your outstanding performance as a coach to the Merrimack High School Girls Wrestling Team, this is for Brian Dine, Eric Terrio, Brett Wilson, and Zach Hicks. Don't go, we got bowling.
Just want to say a few words about bowling.
Oh, you're going to say something about bowling.
So now we move on to bowling, and as a member of the NHIAA and a 25-year-old varsity coach myself, I understand how hard it is to win a championship. It's very difficult. There's 88 high schools participating in athletics in the state of New Hampshire, so bringing home the gold is so important to us, and it also makes us very proud that we have diverse sports at our high school. So congratulations to the bowling team.
All right, first up, we have Ryan Church in recognition of his first place in the 2023 NHIAA Individual Bowling Championship and first place in the 2023 NHIAA Bowling Next, we have Tyler Barnard, who took third place in the 2023 NHIAA Individual Bowling Championship, first place in the 2023 NHIAA Bowling Team Championship. The following are all the members of the first-place 2023 NHIAA Bowling Team Championship. So I'm going to say that once, but then give each student there. Lastly, we want to acknowledge the bowling coaches for their outstanding performance as a coach to the Merrimack High School Bowling Team, and obviously you can see how successful they were. The coaches are Joshua Pelton. Oh, you might want to use the microphone or a microphone somewhere. Yeah, there you go.
We have a very special plaque for the bowling team. This is a plaque that recognizes the Merrimack 10-pin bowling baker's record. Now, Josh, correct me if I'm wrong. That means each student bowls one frame. Is that correct?
Two frames.
Two frames, okay. Excuse me. With a score of 268. Now, keeping in mind that a perfect score is 300, this is absolutely extraordinary. So I'd like to present this to Captain Tyler Bernard, Ryan Church, Ryan Croto, Ethan Shock, and Maxwell Townsend. Guys, if you'd come up, we'll present this to you outstanding.
Nice job, guys.
Congratulations to all of you.
And just one more board comment. Maybe the Board has other comments, but I just want to also thank the parents because we know for your children to get to practices and to put all that time in, it's a family business, right? And so we really do appreciate all the parents and guardians and everyone who supports our athletes.
Next on our agenda, we're moving forward with Superintendent Update.
Now, I know you'd all like to stay for the entire meeting.
Yes, you don't have to. I just didn't want to tell them that yet. They're going to stay.
Thanks for coming.
Yes.
If you'd like to hang around, talk about animals in schools, there's a horse to be mentioned. I was like, they're not these kids, they're going to be sad they didn't tell them. They should have stayed. Their fault. Caitlin could tell them, I guess.
We have definitely thinned out the ranks for public participation, is all I can say.
All right. And with that, thank you, Lori. Yesterday, 17 student delegates. Delicates participated in the Model UN Conference at Bedford High School, and they did an amazing job, according to Nicholas Pierce, who's the Model UN Advisor. I won't be able to go into all of the recognitions, but I do want to mention the names. Bridget Clark, Chris Poison, Liam Clark, Erin Murray, Chavi Chandra Sakarin, Jack Pacora, and we want to congratulate all of them for their outstanding participation in the Model UN Conference. The Merrimack High School Guidance has offered the Student Armed Services Vocational Aptitude Battery Test for the first time last week and had nine students participate. In four to six weeks, they will receive a detailed report guiding them in their strengths, potential career choices, and planning tools. There is no military obligation, as anyone can take this exam, and we hope that students will utilize this opportunity in the future. Below, Emily Dutton sent me a couple of pictures, photos of the annual field trip to HYPE, H-Y-P-E, a student-produced event at UNH Durham in which Merrimack High School students met with others around the state to discuss the role of individual agency and self-determination in a fulfilling student life, and they had lots of great conversations, lots of great interactions with their peers. The Merrimack Middle School Concert Band, under the direction of Holly Levine, performed at the New Hampshire Music Educators Association Middle School Lodge Group Festival this past Saturday in Goffstown. They were listened to and assessed by four judges and received the highest rating possible from all the judges. So congratulations. We have an outstanding, as you know, outstanding music program. Tomorrow night, the Celebration of Song District Choir Concert. The choirs from all of our schools will perform two songs, and the night will close with all of the choirs performing a song together. The Celebration of Song is at 6:30 at Merrimack High School, and next Tuesday, March 28th, is the Cavalcade of Bands Concert. The concert will be at Merrimack High School at 6:30 and features the bands from J-Muse, Merrimack Middle School, Merrimack High School. The concert is not only fun, but showcases the extraordinary musical development of our band students, from beginner right through the most proficient musician at the high school level. I want to remind everyone that kindergarten registration is this Wednesday night, March 22nd, from 6:00 to 7:00 p.m. at James Mastacola Elementary School. Parents of kindergarten students from all three schools, Thornton Ferry, Reed's Ferry, and Mastacola, will be registering students at that time at MES. The Middle School Drama Club Spring Musical and Green Gables will be performed next weekend on Friday, March 31st and April 1st. Both shows are at 7:00 p.m. Julie DeLuca has sent me a very nice article about a student who will be, James Marzano was a 19-year-old sophomore at Wheaton College in Massachusetts, and he has muscular dystrophy, and he will be participating in a reading program at the, at the school, and he will be a guest reader. In fact, that already took place on March 16th. He was a guest reader and very, very well-received. From the hockey coach, Kyle Dunn, student at Merrimack High School, played well in New Hampshire, High School Hockey Senior All-Star Game. Students who were the most talented across the state participated. It was quite an honor for any student to be earning All-Star status, and please join in congratulating Kyle for being selected as New Hampshire, to the New Hampshire All-Star Team, and he will represent with other All-Stars, the New Hampshire Team versus the Vermont All-Stars, in a Make-A-Wish Hockey Classic fundraiser that will take place in Burlington, Vermont, at the University of Vermont on June 30th and July 1st. From Sarah Campbell at the high school, the quarterfinal round of the Granite State Challenge begins airing on New Hampshire Public Television on March 31st at 7:30. You'll be able to tune in next Thursday to see your very own Merrimack Tomahawks take on the Sabres of Sahigan High School to see which team will advance to the semifinals. And from Tammy Lambro, some exciting news. There are 57 students receiving free college credits from Nashville Community College just by taking one or more of the following classes at MHS, Marketing II, Management and Intro to Business. She also has 15 students receiving early college credits from Southern New Hampshire for $100 by taking into Intro of Sports and Events Management courses. So as you can see, outstanding students, outstanding faculty and advisors and coaches. Great things happen, and we're very proud of everyone. And that is it for this evening.
Comments, questions? It's very exciting. Good job. Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum Update.
That's hard to follow between the bowling and the 268 and then all of that. So I'll just say I'm really excited about our two-hour early release on Friday. We've got a lot of really great PD coming together for teachers. We're transitioning to a new phonics program. I've mentioned that a couple of times. So all of that material has come in, and teachers in grades K to 3, anybody that works in kindergarten through grade 3 is all hands on deck to kind of unpack all of that and see what kind of material that we can start using right away. Those teachers have been doing an implementation training through Wilson this week, so Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday, we'll have covered all of those grades. Also offering a 504 training to our school counselors and nurses and anyone that implements a 504 with our district legal team from Wadley. Allison Minatelli and Dean Egret will be on hand to just walk us through again best practices related to 504. We'll be looking at getting, making sure that all of our teachers that are lucky enough to give the New Hampshire SAS coming up, to make sure they have their, their proctoring requirements. Those of you that are familiar with that test, you're required to do it on an annual basis, so making sure that we're all set to have as many proctors as possible. Lots of curriculum work still happening with the Unified Arts Team and at the high school. And we'll also be doing some updates to our website. I know that there were some information that was not as up to date as it, as it should be, so we'll be taking a closer look at that. And then our support staff, if they don't fall into any of those things, we have some, we've transitioned to Vector. I don't know if you're familiar with that. It's an online portal where you can engage in professional development-type activities. It's also where we will offer some of our required trainings in the future. We also have Primex, you might be familiar with that, or Master Teacher, similar idea where you log in and there are some different activities and classes that you can take for either credit or hours or, or just to be able to provide an additional practice for your skill set. So I'm really trying in this role to provide differentiated options for each individual group of teachers, which, as you can imagine, it takes a lot of planning, but I do hope that it's meeting the needs of, of our different staff. So that's what we have on Friday. We have, I'm happy to circle back with all of you about competencies. We have started our work with the New Hampshire Learning Initiative. We had our first meeting with Brian Stack, who's going to be sort of our lead person. He met with the high school building leadership team, and then he met with the district leadership team to just talk about what that work will look like this year, next year, and we've entered into a multi-year agreement with them to really look at competencies K to 12. So at the end, we'll have a comprehensive approach to looking at assessment so that we can really build a body of evidence of how students are learning and how we are providing feedback to them about that learning. And then finally, next Tuesday, our juniors will take the SATs. So when you get up that morning, if you could just say a quick word for them in classrooms for five hours. So I just want to take a minute to thank all of the high school staff that is making that work. So Deb Barker, our Director of School Counseling, she's been at the forefront of getting that all organized, and then, of course, Steve and Jill and Rich, making sure that we have everything that we need, and Jason Pelletier and his group, making sure that we have Chromebooks and chargers and everything that we might need. So March 28th, you know, just say a little something for the high school and the juniors to show up and do their best. So thank you.
Give them a good breakfast that morning.
Listen, don't forget the parents.
We're providing breakfast. Yeah, we're providing breakfast and snacks.
Is there a comment?
I have a comment. This morning, I answered an email from the parents and teachers of Thornton's Ferry, because my daughter goes to Thornton's Ferry, for requesting parent volunteers to come in and help assemble language arts packets. I figured that I was going to be like photocopying or cutting or stapling or something like that, and I was completely thrilled to arrive and find that we were opening up the foundation stuff and like pulling apart all the little letters and putting them on the magnet boards and putting them back in the bags, and so that was just like, it was really cool, and I thought of you when I got there, I was like, yay, we're doing it.
Thank you so much for everyone that has come in to do that work. It is really, really appreciated because, as you can imagine, many hands make light work, so thank you for doing that, and thank you to everybody that came in.
Seriously, thank you to everybody, like the coordinator at the school, who was, who was making sure that we knew what boxes to do, and all of the parents who were there, and they were doing it on Friday, they were doing it this morning, there's people going to be doing it again tomorrow. It's a big project, but yeah, it was exciting to be part of it.
It's a lot to unpack.
And I just want to add that for anybody that might be watching this at home, that I, my office happens to be where I work, happens to be across the hall from a second-grade classroom, so I get to listen to foundations every single day. It's, we are so fortunate that our kids are going to have that. It is so, I listen to the teaching that's happening across the hall, and I can tell it's making a difference and that it's transforming the way kids think about words and that basic phonics instruction. I'm so excited to have it here, and I'm very familiar with those packets because I see them every, in use every single day, and it's a really powerful program. So I just want to say thank you for the, to the administration and the, and the people who decided to move forward with that, because I think that's going to be a huge step forward for our district. I appreciate that. The language arts coordinators and the elementary principals, from the beginning, we've really, it's been a, you know, you have those moments of synergy, and we were all on the same page and really looking at what was the gold standard and what kind of, what we're ready for here in Merrimack, and I'm really happy that we landed on foundations as well. And we've also added the piece at kindergarten, first and second grade to bring in the decodable readers that are aligned with foundations, which not all districts choose that, you know, they maybe have a different program or just a different way of doing it, but pairing the decodable readers with the, with the foundations is, I think, going to give us an even more powerful impact.
Thanks. Thank you. Assistant Superintendent for Business Update.
Yeah, thank you. Today, we posted a copy of the sample ballot on the webpage. We were almost finished up with the Voters Guide. We'll be publishing that as soon as it's ready, and it really kind of, and I want to thank Amy for giving us a really good descriptor of what this budget means for next year and why it is what it is. Part of that was something that we just talked about, the continued effort on foundations, and you're not just buying a budget, you're buying a educational philosophy, and you're investing in your school district, you're investing in your, your kids. It's essential that that budget pass. We want to keep the momentum going in so many different ways that you haven't even talked about, and I'm exceedingly impressed that you got volunteers to come help put that stuff together.
That was Jenny.
Jenny, okay. Well, I would like some volunteers next time it snows at 3:30 in the morning to clear the, clear the sidewalks.
I can see if Jenny can help.
Okay, thank you. We have it on tape now. Also, I'm a member of the Town Center Committee. I've been with the Town Center Committee for a number of years. Nelson Disco, wonderful gentleman. Can't say enough good things about Nelson and everybody else on that committee, including a gentleman named Finley Rothaus, usually sits to my right, representing the Town Council. Nelson is going to be sending the Board Chair a letter that we'll share with the rest of the Board in support of the master plan. There's some areas that they, they did kind of have conversation with me that we're going to go back and we're going to call another meeting or ask to have a meeting call of the Planning, Planning and Building Committee to go over some of the things that Tom and I have looked at and kind of, you know, have questions on it, and we want to further refine thing, things. We have gotten, you know, estimates to bury the utilities, those will be coming in, so that's, that's kind of stage one, but we want to take some time and map it all out in a nice grid for everybody so we can keep track of it. And of course, you know, you authorized me to tear down Brentwood, and we're going to be meeting with the vendor. We got three bids on it. It's definitely within budget, definitely within budget, probably after the, the April vote as it gets closer, just to make sure we have a meeting of the minds of what we think is included and what they think is included, so we need to just talk it out. Right now, it looks like it's all one-turnkey package, you know? Point them in a direction, say, let it be gone, and it'll just kind of happen. We want to make sure all the details are there before, before we start the process. So that's basically it for my world. Not as exciting as what Bill and Amy was talking about, but then again, it never really is, you know, so thank you.
Comments or questions? Okay. School Board Update. So I have a couple of things. The first thing is just talking a little bit about the deliberative session and just saying that the meeting is very important. It's not merely just a public hearing, it's a session where every money article and most others can be amended except for contracts. And for example, a warrant article for $50,000 could be amended to a dollar or $250,000. So I just think that it's really important that we get the word out that people come to that meeting because that meeting could really change a lot for our school district. And then the, the next thing is Ken and I are going to be attending the Town Council meeting to discuss the possible moving of our voting date to March, and there's a long history there, but we're going to make a presentation based on information that we have from the school district. The reason we're proposing this, and we understand that, that snow happens in March, is that, you know, for example, last week, the Nashville School District did a major hiring session, and so they are four weeks ahead of us, and so, so we're representing the school and the town, and we're going to try to do what's best for our school district so we have a better chance to hire those brand-new graduates or people looking for a job in our town before someone else gets them. And then also, with Matt was talking about the Center Committee, there is going to be discussion because at some point in time, we're going to need to have a new SAU building, and we're going to need to make sure, again, that we put the school district first and we do what's right for our school district and, and our town, but our school district a lot of times make sacrifices that other people don't make. Sorry. I hope my husband's not watching this right now. Okay. I'll turn it over to Caitlin, Student Representative Update.
So I don't have anything super special today because we were unable to meet for Student Council today, but a few things that are like coming up in the year that I should have more details on next meeting are our Spring Spirit Week, Prom is coming up, Senior Week is coming up, and then Graduation Plan, so I should have more details on all of those fun events next meeting.
Comments? Okay, we're going to move on to Old Business Review, the proposed 2023 NHIAA Okay, we're going to move on to old business review, the proposed 2023-2024 school calendar.
Thank you. This year, as we did last year, we put together a committee, a calendar committee that consisted of teacher Deb Fornia, Bonnie Pain Show, Laura Libby, Brooke Ross, Nicole, Nikki Rowe, Adam Carragher, Rich Zampieri, Sally Egel, who is a teacher at Merrimack High School, Melissa Fazek, Heather Barker, Amy, and myself. We also, I also conferred with Lynn Christensen a couple of times during the process. And we put together a calendar that modeled the calendar we instructed for this year. You know, sometimes a superintendent will present just a calendar to a school board. We'd like to give you a little bit of information in terms of the who, what, when, where, and why of, of the calendar and the significance of dates and times and some of the considerations that we put into the development of this calendar is that we wanted to make sure that it had a good appearance and was readable by parents and staff and students. We want to make sure that we met the required number of instructional days for the state, which was 180 days. We wanted to make sure that we built in opportunities for professional development. We are committed to working with you, working with our leadership team, working with our entire staff to improve the school system. You are already seeing some of that play out right now in terms of curriculum revision and updates. That takes professional development and we want to commit certain dates and amounts of time to that professional development. We want to recognize certainly the holidays and cultural observances to that end, along with the calendar. You will see at the end of the calendar document is a document that we developed last year for the first time in Merrimack. I have used this in other locations in the past, and that is the Guide to Religious and Cultural Observances. We want our staff to be cognizant of those religious and cultural events that families across Merrimack observe and be sensitive to the nature of those observances, whether it involves fasting, missing school, et cetera, because that will have an impact and could and may have an impact on the dates that we hold certain events such as concerts, parent conferences, testing, major assignments. So we want to be as sensitive as possible to the dynamics in the family for those observances. We have articulated the high school graduation date, which according to state law can not be any more than five days prior to the original end of the school year. So to explain once again, if we had 10 snow days, and we're halfway there this year, if we had 10 snow days, that doesn't impact the date of graduation. That's why seniors always love a number of snow days because they don't have to make them up, right Caitlin? We have placed the parent conferences in there. We have accommodated the election days. We will have no school on those days. Now, there is some uncertainty in talking with Lynn about the January date. We have put a placeholder in January for the presidential primary. We're not sure actually when that date will be, but we'll move it when we do. And the May election also is, is designated as a no school, excuse me, the April election. Did I say May? April election on April 9th of next year will be a no school day also. This calendar meets the, the collective bargaining agreement provisions. It includes information about kindergarten registration. We will have on the first day, another opportunity for students to transition. Students in grades K, 5, 7, and 9 will come in at the normal time, normal starting time. All other students on that day will come in two hours later. That gives those students that are new to a particular site, an opportunity to become acclimated to it just in a little bit more relaxed pace and to learn a little bit more about the site. And feedback from the principals this year was very, very positive on that. We have articulated on the calendar the school daily start and end times, including the early release times, because some people tend to forget what time is early release times. And we have included in here the questionnaire that we've sent out to both parents and staff again this year. And the construction of our calendar is consistent with the feedback that we received from both parents and our staff. As I said, we have been sensitive to cultural and religious observances. We have continued to move the calendar. We did this mostly last year in alignment with the Career Technical Education Centers. That was an initiative that the Department of Education asked all of the regional members to, to pursue. So I think it's, it's a very nice job. It's, it's colorful. It is explanatory. In each month, we have tried to present to you in some text to the size of each month, what is going on in that particular month. As we said, we've got the schools starting in closing times. We've got the graduation date. We have the information, important dates down the bottom, high school and a couple of the other schools. It's still a little bit uncertain, but that will fill and we'll fill those in as soon as, as soon as possible. So we'd be glad to answer any questions that you might have. And hopefully you appreciate that Guide to Religious and Cultural Observances. We heard a lot of, a lot of very positive feedback from the staff on that.
Questions, comments?
Yeah, just a couple. I love the voting day, no school. I, I think that's long overdue. Was there any thought about making those teacher workshop days or is that, did I miss that?
We, we did talk about that, Ken, but we felt that, first of all, there are only a certain number of days that we could place in the calendar. We wanted to place them more strategically in terms of when that PD was, was needed, sort of just in time PD. We did discuss it, but we thought that other dates would be more advantageous in terms of the time that we could spend with the staff.
That makes, that makes sense. I just know, you know, two hours can sometimes just not be enough time. So sometimes having those full days makes a big difference. So I was just wondering about that. And then I, you know, the, the last day of school being on a Monday is not fun for anybody, but I, I think, I think we can assume we'll probably have a snow day or two. So it's unlikely that we will actually end on the last day of school that, as it's listed right here. And I, I, I think the transition days are crucial. I know in my district, we actually, the, like for the high school, for example, the first day of school is just freshmen, the whole day. We don't have any upperclassmen in the building at all. And it makes the following day so much smoother and more comfortable. And it's, I can't, yeah, I can't say enough good things about those transition days. And that's all I can think of for now, but I'll see if I'll come up with more.
First of all, I want to echo the transition. My kids never had, my older kids never had that benefit, but I have a transitioner coming this year, so I'm very grateful. And I heard nothing but positive feedback from parents. I know you had said from staff, but from parents as well, a lot of feedback about how it was a huge benefit. And Matt, I was just going to ask, you know, we got that, we got an email saying, oh my goodness, you know, school's going to end on a Monday and it'll be a half day or whatever. But I, I can't remember a time we've ever not had at least two snow days. Is there, can you remember a time that that's ever happened?
In my 23 years here, I think we've had, we almost were there until the end, kind of like this year. You know, you're in January, you've got like none, and then all of a sudden you get clobbered in March. And then you have the Mother's Day flood, which had nothing to do with snow, but which knocked us off for like around four days because all the power was down. So we've always had around at least two.
Yeah, that, my answer to that email was, I, I can't even think of the fact that we won't go till at least Wednesday if we ever, even if we had the best winter we've ever had, because it just always works out. There's some timing issue, even if it's a small storm. So I, I think it looks great and I appreciate all the thought and hard work that went into just making it what I think is a really excellent setup. Oh, the other thing, a few people saw that you've already decided the graduation date and they wanted to jump for joy because in the past, we've kind of, you know, waited and waited and we're going to decide and we're going to decide. I mean, as a parent of an upcoming senior in 2024, thank you for telling me what the date is right now. I got a little misty eyed when I was looking at this. I'm not going to lie.
Well, that's pretty much defined by statute in that, you know, it, it cannot be any more than five days before the end of the school year. So the 15th through June, what did I say? 15th was it?
15th, which is like Jenna just said, I mean, parents, it's the biggest stressor, starting in January and February. When, when is graduation? Because the grandparents are coming in and, and not having a date and then waiting, it's just so hard. So I'm glad we voted to go to ours. That's the difference because when you did days, we couldn't do this. But my only, I'm just going to echo what everyone said, that this is such a collaboration of work and so many people, you know, put their time into this. And, and I think the calendar is, is outstanding and I'm very excited about next year and, and every year, but good job.
Thank you. And I'll pass that on to the committee.
We don't need to vote to approve that. That's just good to go, right? That was just a presentation.
You know, I always think it's good to approve the school calendar.
I have, I have a question. I was curious if we know when the primary date will be decided in January? If that's like, if they like leave it up to the wire every year or when that? Because my thought was, do we have any flexibility? Like if it ends up being sometime the week of the 22nd, do we like not have school on the Tuesday and then the teacher workshop day on the Friday? Or do we have some flexibility there where we might be able to like combine them? If, if it so happens that the, that the primary happens to be like within a week or so? Because that, it, it kind of hits both the.
I was going to jump in when Ken was talking earlier. One of the things we're doing next year is we have some pre, pre-arranged folks coming in. So on the October 6th date is one of our touchpoints for the IREDDI implementation. So you have to lock those presenters in. And then in January is the, the third touchpoint. So unfortunately, we couldn't do any other days. And with the floating day, we really had to pick the time. And then the early release days, Bill and I had a long conversation around the mandatory trainings. And as Ken said, if you've been in a classroom, it's really hard sometimes to teach all day and then have your two hours. So what we're planning for on those early releases are the mandatory trainings that teachers have to do anyway. So rather than, you know, have a whole day of that, they would have a day and then be able to do their bullying training. We're just trying to be really thoughtful about how you use that time and that seemed to be the best way. But we really couldn't be flexible on those two things because we had to sign, you know, have those people available. So thank you.
That's awesome. Thank you for explaining it.
And then the only other comment I wanted to make real quick was, because there's always the conversation of before Labor Day or after Labor Day. I've never started school after Labor Day as a, as a teacher. And I personally, having that kind of slow introduction to school and we get all like, we do the picture assembly and we do the class assemblies and we get the kids used to the building and their classes and then the nice long weekend. And then we just hit the ground running the next week, like all the logistics of the beginning of the year are out of the way. So I was really happy when this switch was made last year to before Labor Day. I, I know it's like cuts into summer a little bit, but you know, sports and marching band are already in school a week before that. So, but I just, I, I think that's a good move.
Caitlin?
I just want to voice as a student who's had after Labor Day almost their entire educational career. This year, the before Labor Day was so nice to not just have to go cold turkey back to school. I get that. Like Mr. Martin said, it does cut into summer a little bit, but having like a day or two days and then having like three days and then you have a full week of school. It was so nice. So I have to voice my support for that.
Thank you. Well, I'll be happy to make a motion that we accept the school calendar as presented.
Second? All those in favor?
Aye. Thank you. You know, just one final comment. The important thing is for everyone to realize, we just don't roll a calendar over from one year to the next. We take a look at what, what the initiatives are that we are undertaking with, in terms of curriculum, instruction, any other types of initiatives that may require some training. And we, we try to make the calendar work based on the needs of students and, and our staff. So it's, I want to thank the committee, the calendar committee, because we gave it a considerable amount of discussion and it was a very thoughtful discussion. And thank you for approving it.
Perfect. Okay, we're moving on to new business. So.
Last, last day of school?
Yep.
Yes. Because everyone's interested, everyone's trying to begin with vacation plans. And the only thing I would caution is for staff and families not to cut it too close to the end of the school year. As you know, the, the statute is 180 days. But if you, if you look at the hourly requirement from the Department of Education, 189.1 and 189.24, the hourly requirement is 945 instructional hours at the K to 6 level, at the 1 through 6 level, excuse me, it's 450 hours at the kindergarten level. So 945 hours at the 1 through 6 grades and 990 hours in grades 7 through 12. Now, as of right now, with a beautiful December, a beautiful January, and as Matt said, the hot break of February and March, our last day to meet the 180-day requirement would be June 22nd. That would be a Thursday. However, we've been working with the principals in calculating instructional hours. And based on instructional hours at elementary and middle and high school level, our last day as of right now, assuming we have no more cancellation days, could be Tuesday, June 20th. That would be an early release, a half day for students, a full day for staff that could use that for classroom closeout. And the next two days, the 21st and the 22nd, according to the collective bargaining agreement, would be professional development days. And I've talked with Amy and she is developing some PD for those two days, which will be very, very important days in terms of transitioning into the following school year. So for students, as of right now, based on the hourly requirement, we can cut off a couple of days. So the last day of school right now for all students as of tonight will be June 20th. That's Tuesday, June 20th. And the staff will finish up on Thursday, June 22nd. So we have to keep our fingers crossed for no more cancellations due to ice, snow, hurricanes, anything else that might come our way.
Comments or questions? Okay, we're going to move on and board member Jenna Hardy is going to take over on policies.
All right. This is the fun part. Just kidding.
You've all been waiting for it.
Policies. The first thing up is the second review of the early admission to kindergarten and grade one policy, which is JFAAA. Any comments or questions? When Naomi shakes her head, I think we're good.
It's got no typos and I was going to, I was going to ask, have we had any comment from the public to anyone's knowledge on this policy?
No comment. No.
I do believe the second reading means we do need to review and adopt it. Am I correct in that? There's a third reading. Oh, okay. So this is good then to just pass on to the third review. Okay. Yep. All right. Second review of service animals, IMG. Sorry, I had to chuckle. Any comments or questions? Okay. No more questions about the animals that are allowed, huh? We're good. Okay. So we're going to push that through to its third review as well. Next up is the second review of animals in the school, IMG. Any comments or questions? All right. That is also moved to third review. Now we are to a first reading of the student use of information technology, which is policy JICL. Comments or questions? Okay, Naomi.
It's a really tiny one, I promise. What is school world? It's on page, the top of page two. As available, use district provided communication systems for. It's on page, the top of page two. As available, use district provided communication systems, for example, School World, school email when communicating. I, I suspected it was an acronym and that was, it was like, is that, is that something we currently use or is, does that need to be struck?
I have no idea, but I'll ask Jason and let you know.
Sounds good.
Yeah, I, I don't believe we currently use that, although I could, could be incorrect.
All right. We will get an answer to that question. Any other comments or questions?
Um, same thing on page four. There's a, at the very top, uh, it's about social media and it, for example, blogs, uh, Microsoft 365, Facebook, Twitter, Tumblr, YouTube. Um, should, is that something we should update? I didn't know if those were consciously chosen or if there's other ones people use or I don't follow social media a ton, but like I know TikTok exists and various other things. So just was.
We'll, we'll check with Jason also. We'll check with our legal counsel also. Please know that, you know, the red is, uh, these have been thoroughly reviewed by our, our legal counsel to make sure they meet all statutory requirements, but we'll check the social media, uh, information that you requested.
And my thought is it, just, the sentence just before that says, in all its forms and iterations.
Et cetera, at the end of it too. So I was like, do I even bring it up?
I think they're just listing some of the big ones.
Is Tumblr still big?
I don't even know.
Tumblr's still big.
I don't even wanna say that. I don't know what it is, but.
Including, uh, you know, uh, such as, or, and in addition to other, you know, social media platforms.
No, I think we're probably covered. I was just curious because I was like, I don't know if that's been updated or, or if people thought about it. So.
I just have one comment too. I, when I read this on page three of five, I, I think it's really important. I like the part that says that student use of personal devices in the district network is a privilege, not a right. And, um, when, as we move forward with, um, you know, looking at, um, cell phone usage at the high school, um, and aligning, you know, this policy with this, you know, student handbook and, and, and policies, I think it's really important for students to, to realize that, you know, our primary goal is for them to, to learn and that's our focus.
And, and cell phones are just such an interesting conversation to have because as we rely on technology and we're continuing to grow our reliance on technology and sometimes it's just easier to have some, like your, your school email account or any of the apps that you use for school. Like I know at my school, my kids have like Power School on their, on their app, on their phones. So, um, you know, it's one of these interesting conversations where where's that line between this is an educational tool versus this is a distraction? Um, and I'm not saying I have the answers, but it's, it's an interesting conversation to have and, and, you know, it's funny too, when I, when I, I, I see teachers with phones on their desks telling kids to put their phones away. It's, you know, it's so, it's, you know, we, we need them, but we hate them and we love them and we don't hate, love them. So it's a weird, it's a weird conversation to have.
As I say, in May, uh, Jason Pelletier, our director of, of technology will be before you to give you an update of where we are. Um, we'll have principals talking about cell phone use also, but we also, uh, make a presentation to you about, um, do we allow students to bring their own devices, including laptops? And as you know, uh, we brought that in a little bit late uh, in the summer, uh, for consideration. We want to do it early enough so that, uh, you can be informed to make a decision in terms of whether or not you want to allow that in the, in the school district.
All right. Any other thoughts, comments, questions about that policy? Okay. So we, we will move that to its second review. Last up is the annual review of the investment policy DFA. Any comments or questions? All right. Seeing none. Now that's an annual review. Do we need to vote? Okay, okay. So we need to approve this tonight. So if anyone would like to make a motion?
I will make a motion to approve the, what is it? The DFA?
Yep.
Uh, policy.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Four zero.
Four zero.
Thank you.
So we're moving on to approval of the minutes. Um, we're going to talk about the February 6th, 2023 minutes. I need a motion to approve.
I will make a motion to approve the minutes of February 6th.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Naomi, all those in favor? Okay.
Oh, I, I'm abstaining.
Oh, you're abstaining. Yeah. So it's three zero one. And now we're moving on to February 20th, 2023 minutes. Do I have a motion for approval?
I'll move to approve the minutes from February 20th, 2023, although I just noticed there's a typo. It says 2022 on the top.
Naomi, the second?
Uh, I'll second. Uh, once we correct the date.
Yeah, we need to correct the date at the top.
Oh, yes.
2023, not 2023-2.
So approve that as amended.
As amended, yes. And you seconded it as amended. So.
Okay. All in favor? All those in favor?
Aye.
Four zero zero. And now we're moving on to the March 6th, 2023 minutes after the deliberative session. Do I have a motion to accept?
I will.
I will make a motion that we accept the March 6th, 2023 minutes.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Naomi, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, we're gonna move on to the consent agenda.
Tonight, we have one administrator's retirement. Um, Director of Student Services Heather Barker has submitted her letter that at the end of her current contract, she will retire after 30 years of serving in public education. I know you all wish, um, join me in wishing her well and whatever comes next for her. Heather has done extraordinary things here in the district and, um, we will miss her, um, both as a colleague and a district leader. So, um, that posting is up. I don't know if you've, you've seen it. We have had some, um, early interest and, and we will look to move a person forward as soon as we can, um, to bring, um, as we look forward.
Do I have a motion to accept the consent agenda?
Uh, yeah, I will make a motion.
Second?
I will second.
Jenna, all those in favor?
Aye.
Lori, may I just say something about Heather for a moment? Um, as you know, I've, I've been in education for, for many years. And I don't think I've ever, uh, seen a person as passionate uh, as Heather about doing what is right for, uh, students with disabilities or as we often say, students with special abilities. Uh, she has been tenacious in making sure that we meet the needs of our students. Yes, there will always be, uh, some areas that we can probably do more, uh, according to, you know, uh, some parents and, and, and that will always be in evidence. But she has done an extraordinary job in this school district and like Heather, wanna thank her and wish her nothing but the most enjoyable and happy, healthy retirement. I hope, quite honestly, I hope she'll consider, uh, doing some training, either on her own or for the Department of Education, uh, because she has one of the most knowledgeable people in terms of statutory requirements, compliance, issues, uh, paperwork, processes, processes, um, that I've, I've ever worked with. And, uh, we're gonna miss her greatly. And so I wanna, you know, certainly join Amy and I know Matt and Melissa, uh, we've all enjoyed working with her and, uh, we wish her nothing but the best.
And I had sent her an email when I read, uh, about her retirement and, you know, I'm happy for her 30 years in education, but um, what I would say is that she had, uh, wild enthusiasm and, uh, every time she did a board presentation, you could feel her passion and her enthusiasm and how much she really cared for kids. So we'll all miss her very much. Okay. Other committee reports. No committee reports. Okay. Cause the budget committee's over and, okay, correspondence.
Well, I think we all got the email about the last day of school being on Monday.
Yep.
Uh, some feedback from a parent about that.
And, uh, I had a couple, um, a couple. One was, um, delightful because it was from a, a Merrimack High School, um, senior who was writing about questions about the deliberative session. And, um, what he wanted to know is, um, why the moderator did not take a vote. And what I explained to him is, um, the moderator, if there was a request, he would do a ballot vote, but because um, from the video, he couldn't see that it was pretty clear that, um, the, the yellow cards on that side, um, prevailed. Um, but I really, it was a great email and then I responded, then he responded back and I just, that's, that's the stuff that really touches your heart when you have students who are advocating also and being aware of the issue. So that was great. And then I did have a parent who was seeking information about, um, the number of AP and honors classes at our high school, just having questions about, um, how many honors classes, how many AP classes? How, you know, do we, um, figure out GPA, those kinds of questions? Um, and then, um, that's it. Okay. Comments?
I just had a, a few things. Um, first of all, uh, tacking on to what Bill was saying about the middle schools large group performances last weekend. The high school band and chorus is performing at the high school large group festival this Saturday at Boe High School, which it is open to the public. If people are interested in going to check it out, I think the band is at 9:30 in the morning and I think the chorus is a little later in the day. I think like 11:30, 12, I will be there. So, um, should be fun to check those guys out. And then, uh, a few weeks back, I had the privilege of meeting our new, um, pathways to alternative, or alternative pathways to graduation and ELO coordinator, Mr. Harley Hall. I was enjoying my prep period at school and he was in my classroom because he was visiting our ELO coordinator at Winnicott High School and just getting some insight into how we do things over there. So I got a chance to chat with him and he's like very excited about this position and he was very motivated and enthusiastic. So, um, sounds like it was the right call. Uh, he's, he seems like he's ready to go. But that was cool.
I'll piggyback on that because I maybe have a student that's doing an ELO and Mr. Hall has already been a huge help. So it, I'm very impressed already.
His heart is really into it.
And my only comments to end the session is, uh, it's just so exciting when we come to board meetings and you look at the amount of work that this district is doing and all the positive results of it, because we always talk about evidence. And the evidence are, you know, we had all of these students here tonight. We listened to, uh, all the curriculum and the parents coming to unpack the, the foundations. And we just have so many wonderful things going on and, um, it's just exciting because it doesn't happen in every district and we need to appreciate and be grateful for what we have right now. Okay. Public comments on agenda items.
Hi, Goodie Thing. I'm Heather Robitaille, 45 Springfield Circle. I just also wanted to express my appreciation and excitement over the foundations program that's being rolled out, um, along with the rest of the parents and teachers of Thornton's Ferry Board. Um, we've been met with a group of parents, as Naomi mentioned, that has been helping us, um, team up with Jenny Kaln and, um, the educators working with her to prep all these kits for the teachers to be rolled out. Um, so we've been breaking up the letter boards and looking at the material that's in there. I am so excited for what this means for our students because it's really incredible. And I think that it's going to have such a positive impact on their literacy skills and building that up that later interventions will be greatly reduced. And, um, I was, I don't want to forget to thank our volunteer coordinator, uh, Monica Van Asselberg, who has been rallying our parents to come in and help as well. And we are blessed in Thornton's Ferry community to have a wonderful group of families join us. So thank you to all of them. But I got to deliver these kits today to our, our second graders and the excitement from both the educators and the students was really incredible. And it just makes me feel like even beyond the material, like our educators being so excited about this program means it's going to have a real impact and be really successful for our students. So I'm thankful we're doing that, grateful to be a part of the community and excited about that program to roll out. I only wish my third grader could have gotten more benefit from it, but she certainly will as well. So, thank you.
May I just say, um, Heather, thank you for those comments. You know, we always talk about trying to inspire and motivate people and build momentum. And, and hopefully what we're hearing week after week, uh, and, and thank you for making that comment, Lori, is that between the parents and our staff and all of you, we are building momentum and positive momentum and we will continue that and move forward so that in two or three and four years from now, um, I think you'll see a, a dramatic improvement in test scores, uh, uh, but that's not only, you know, the only, um, indices. You, you'll see different indicators in the school system that are proving that what we're trying to do with our staff, because the staff is crucial and the parents' support, voters' support and yours, uh, it's gonna make great things happen here. And we appreciate your support.
Okay. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
I will make a motion to adjourn.
Naomi? Thank you, everyone, for coming.
Oh, oh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Four zero zero.